So, thank you for being here, Carrie Templeton.
Thank you for having me.
I think that I'd like to start with a really broad question. You've been on the Planning Commission now for two years, this most recent year as chair, of course. But I assume you've observed the workings of Palo Alto politics and the Planning Commission for a period before that. And I'm wondering if you could, now having served on the Commission for two years, speak a little bit to the polarization that has occurred on the Commission, the kind of personal controversies and the failure of the City Council to really follow many recommendations of the Planning Commission? And perhaps just the overall political discord in Palo Alto. So, very broad question, but I think it'll help us get a sense for sort of where you fit into this and your views of how government is working or not in Palo Alto.
Yes, I appreciate the question. I had a lot of similar questions when I was first getting involved in Palo Alto politics. So, I understand where they come from. There's an interesting frame that the question brings to the conversation, right? You mentioned the failure of the City Council to follow the guidelines and things like that. And I did a lot of research about this when I first joined the Planning Commission because I wanted to know, you know, is something broken? Can we fix it? And in my conversation with council members, I realized that, you know, the function of the Planning and Transportation Commission is to be the apolitical body. And then sometimes they do overturn it for political considerations, right? They're hearing from people in the community that haven't come to us, or we're making a recommendation based on something that's written and that we need to hold to, whereas they have a little bit more flexibility on council. So, I have a little bit less harsh of a view about council and their willingness to overturn recommendations from various commissions, given that perspective. So, what I do recognize is that we do have, you know, political camps in Palo Alto of different interests, and that those occasionally do get a chance to be heard thoroughly and first at the Planning and Transportation Commission. So, that's an important function as well, even if, you know, it does sort of put us in different sides occasionally or for certain issues. So, that's a necessary function. That's an important function. And we're really lucky because our community is involved in those discussions, much more so than any place I've ever lived before. So, I think it's a good thing. It does feel uncomfortable at times because people we're friends with or neighbors with may occasionally be on a different side of an issue. So, the thing that I'm really excited about is, over the two years that I've been on the Planning and Transportation Commission, we have become more aware of the discord that is perceived amongst us. And I think we've really been working on improving that and having a more collegial relationship, even if we disagree. And that's been a wonderful change for me and I think for some of the other commissioners as well.
When did that start?
I would say last year, we really worked on it. It was something that I worked on behind the scenes with the relationship with staff, with the other commissioners, with frequent commenters from the public, just reaching out and trying to understand, you know, why is the PTC so frustrating at times? What do you think we should do differently? And we had this amazing moment at the beginning of this year where everybody came together and said, what if we changed these things about how we interact? Could we have a better outcome and more fruitful discussions? So, the public sent in a letter. Commissioners had comments on it. It was really a nice turning point. I thought it was a special moment for me in my experience in the PTC.
So, you think the level of political polarization or politics on the Commission has reduced since you've been on it?
I'm not sure. I would say the positions are changed. I think I'm commenting more on how we interact with each other.
The behavior.
Yeah. And, you know, it's good. And with, you know, you have to try and find silver linings on things. I look at the whole movement to Zoom during the pandemic. We've had a lot more accessibility of the Planning Commission meetings to the public and gotten a lot more involvement, many, many comments. And they've all been good-natured and sharing their point of view without, you know, changing to a negative tone in any way. So, that's been nice.
I want to ask one more follow-up on that's related, and that has to do with your approach to the Castilea application. One of the things that I was struck by was the lateness of the materials for your last meeting, which was your first substantive meeting on the issue, where you received at your places and therefore the public had no opportunity to see, nor did you really, as commissioners, the staff's response to your questions from the August meeting, as well as the applicant Castilea submitted a very complicated document response as well. That does not have a good look to it in terms of public participation and a public process. You're the chairperson of the Commission, so presumably you had the ability to say, I don't want to see anything at our places on that night. So, I'm just wondering what your view is of staff work, transparency, and the Commission's openness to the public being aware of what you're actually looking at?
I appreciate the question, and I'm going to challenge your frame on that a little bit. This was a continuation of a previous meeting that would have gone, let's see, into 3:00 a.m. if we'd continued that evening. And so, we were able to close public comments at the prior meeting and ask questions that presumably staff would have been able to answer during the first meeting, but because we continued it to the next meeting, they brought those answers written down, which is an improvement in transparency because they were able to provide it a few hours early and people could respond. Is it ideal? No. Will we have another opportunity for public comment on Castilea? Yes, it'll be coming back to the Planning Commission on the 14th. And so, I think that will be the best opportunity because everyone will have had a chance to read through the comments. But those comments were in response to Commissioner questions.
Yeah, and I understand that, but it also could have been provided to you the two days or three days or four days before. I mean, that's a matter of coordination with the staff and setting some limits.
It could have been provided to us in the moment as well, right?
Right. So, why at the last minute?
Because that's when they gave it to us, right? And we had it scheduled, and people wanted to hear our thoughts, and we wanted to follow through with those questions and get the answers. So, you know, I agree with you. It's not ideal, but I'm not feeling that that is a lack of transparency issue.
So, if you were on the council, how would you feel about a staff report coming out the day of the council meeting?
Was it a staff report?
Well, prepared by the--
So, typically, a staff report is something that is required to be released a few days before. So, I think that's what you're getting at. This was staff responding to questions. I don't, you know, I asked, I did ask the question of our council, you know, is this enough time? When will we get it? And does this count as a staff report? What can we do to open this up more? And the advice was that we were within the bounds of what is required.
Yep, that's true.
So, we moved forward with it based on that, just to make sure, because people were counting on having the opportunity to discuss it that evening.
So, I know that one of the concerns that you bring to this campaign is racial justice, and you attended the Black Lives Matter protest at the City Hall in June. You also say that your experience on the Planning and Transportation Commission can help the city to reach greater diversity. I assume you're in part talking about housing and board representation and things. I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about what you think you can bring, based on your experience, to making progress when it comes to racial justice and diversity?
That's a great question. Thank you. I would say that, you know, all of us have a role in this, and I've been working over the past five years with a variety of different activists and educating myself on the issues and when to be a good bystander, when to speak up, and how we can be good allies to our members of color in the community. And I think, right now, we have some low-hanging fruit of things we can improve to bring more diversity into the voices that are speaking and participating in our local government. I'll go back to saying the Zoom meetings are bringing a whole new breadth of people into participating in our government process. That's huge. We've been talking about that before COVID hit, especially around young parents or people that are working night shift, things like that. How can they get involved without disrupting their income and their family life? So, you know, this is something that's been going on for a while, and now that we have it, we see, we're actually seeing the benefits of having that accessibility and bringing in the diverse voices, and we're hearing these conversations. So, that's a start. That's something I'd like to fight for, finding a way to allow remote participation to continue even after COVID. I'm also thinking about the Commission appointment process and the boards and panels as well in that we're not necessarily confronting ourselves with the question of diversity of any kind of angle, not just ethnic background or national origin, but we're also not asking about, you know, if a panel affects parents or children, are we including parents there? If a panel affects renters, are we including renters there? Right? How can we ask ourselves at the point of decision-making to confront with our goals, our community goals? And they have done some behavioral economic studies around this, and that's why people sign the honor code right before they take a test, because if you confront yourself with your goals right before you make the decision, you're more likely to comply with them. So, one of the things I was thinking about is how can we ask ourselves when making appointments, what are our goals, and how can we have the most representative panel possible?
Seems like one of the challenges for populating the Commissions has just been getting participation. There's a number of people who feel like they can't participate. They are, as you pointed out, working at the time. So, the decision point wouldn't be the point at which the council would have the greatest impact. It would be in the recruitment process, would it not?
Right, that's on us, right? That's on us. We need to make sure that we're marketing those opportunities to get involved adequately and to a diverse set of people. Maybe not everybody is using the same channel, right? So, how can we, as a city, make that one of our higher priorities? And we're really lucky, we've got a new communications person in our leadership team, so we could work with her to, you know, elevate that and work on getting more applicants.
And along the same lines of racial justice, so the city's launched a reform process with its police department. I want to know what you think is the most important change, if any, that should be pursued with the department in order to make sure that things like in Minneapolis don't happen here?
Yes. This is a very serious question, and, you know, it boils down to what level of violence is acceptable in our community? And does it matter who commits the violence? We do have a mental health crisis in our community on top of any other incidents, and I would like to see us address all these things together. We have, I believe, this number may be from the old budget, but I believe we've got something like 50 field officers, they're armed field officers on the police force. I'm wondering what would happen if, you know, five of those became mental health first responders that were able to come in and deal with the issue with their toolset rather than an armed toolset, right? Would we have different outcomes? So, these are questions I want to explore with the police. I haven't spoken with them about it, but I'm hearing a lot of need for that from my talks with people in the community. I think that we need to address it, we need to face it. A lot of us are aware of the crisis, but what are we doing about it? And how can we coordinate with, say, the county? The county has a lot of social resources and mental health resources. We're at the north of the county. Are we asking for everything we want and need to take care of our community? I know we're on the edges, so we're not necessarily on the front of mind, but how can we elevate that? And I know that we have people thinking about it and working on it, but let's step it up. Let's see what we can do to solve that as soon as possible, especially during COVID. The isolation is devastating for many of our youth and our seniors.
And you also mentioned on your website the idea of a police oversight commission. How would that work exactly?
You know, I'm really frustrated that the police isn't more accountable to our community members, and this is one of the panels that I'm thinking about. If we were to have a representative group of people who live in this community and participate in this community review the incidents, I think we'd have a lot more satisfaction amongst our community members about their reports and their outcomes. Right now, it feels very distant, and there's some skepticism there. As we have such an involved community, they want to know more. They want it to be more personal, more close to home, and I think that would be a really positive step towards building trust between the police officers and the community.
So, would this replace the police auditor? And would this be a part of the HRC, or would this be a separate citizen commission?
I would, I imagine it as a separate citizen commission. The HRC is responsible for different things. They're responsible for, in some, part of their responsibility is around giving and getting community organizations more active and involved. This is a very different organization that I have in mind. And we would probably want to get people with experience and knowledge of how policing is done and what the practices are. We also need to have people that are representative and leaders in communities that are perhaps overpoliced in our community.
This type of proposal is resisted heavily by police around the country, as you probably know. And Chief Johnson has made pretty clear that he prefers his approach, which is to have, to appoint, an advisory committee that only he meets with and that he picks. And I'm assuming from your comments, you think that's an inadequate method of involving the public?
Well, I don't think it solves the problem. It doesn't solve the transparency problem that you mentioned earlier. I agree with you. That's an issue in Palo Alto. It's very important. It doesn't solve the problem of building trust with our community and, you know, what is driving the need to be covert about it? So, I think that, you know, what the subtext of your question is, how would I push past that? I would need to meet with him and talk with him about what his concerns are and what are some potential alternatives that could meet the goals of the community and the goals of the police force.
Would you continue having an independent police auditor if that group is in place? And also, do you have any thoughts about the changes that the City Council recently made to the independent police auditor's scope of services?
I'm so sorry. Could you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, sure. I just wanted to ask you if you still would support having an independent police auditor in place, even with the new commission? And if you have any thoughts about recent changes to the scope of the independent police auditor that the City Council approved for the past year?
I do think it's appropriate to move HR-related issues to someone with skill set to handle that, so I'm okay with that change. As far as the independent police auditor, if it were important to the police, then we could talk about would that person want to be part of this panel? And, you know, the problem is it might be a defensive position, right? I make this recommendation. What do you guys think? So, we need to think about, like, setting that up for success from the beginning. So, I don't have a hard stance on that either way. What I really do want is to make sure that the community has a chance to evaluate the incidents as well.
But you don't think the change to the contract was a step away from transparency? The taking of internal conflicts--
I'm not recalling the contract change. You mean the, all I've mentioned was the HR change.
Yeah, the change that's, in the past, an independent police auditor would look at internal conflicts within the department, and the change means that it would no longer do so. It would be HR, and hence not reflected in the public reports.
Okay, so we're talking about the same thing. I'm not concerned about that. I think that having an HR professional deal with incidents of inappropriate workplace behavior makes a lot of sense. I don't know that, I haven't heard a lot of satisfaction with how the independent police officer was handling that, and this may provide an opportunity for more satisfactory outcomes.
One of the, to ask one further question on the police issue, one of the practices of the Palo Alto Police Department is to strictly release public records only if they're required to do so by law. As you probably know, the Public Records Act doesn't prevent the release of public records, but the city has strictly basically said, if we're not forced by the law to release something, we're not going to release it. And this is applied across lots of dimensions, but particularly with police. Is that something that you would like to see changed? What is your view on that type of transparency issue?
I would favor more transparency here. I'm frustrated with the approach because of how it affects the root cause problem of not trusting our police and our government that we're hearing from members of our community. So, I think as, you know, with your city hat on, I understand where they're coming from and why they want to be as, you know, hold the cards as close to the vest as possible. But we're starting to see fallout from that. And so, I think we really need to revisit it and see, are there times when it would be better for the city and the community to disclose earlier?
Can we go talk about housing a bit? So, the city set a goal for itself of 300 units a year and failed to meet that goal, citing financial hurdles with developers, zoning issues. Where can we make the greatest impact on reaching, producing more housing than we have in the past several years?
Oh, if only I had all the answers. That's such a nice, simple question. The response I would have is a little bit multifaceted, I would say, that we do have to address a lot of the barriers. So, we have, for example, we have applicants that come back multiple times with a project, and that's costly. It's costly for them. It's costly for the city. It delays things. So, I'm wondering where we can find some efficiencies here, and, you know, that would be something to work with planning. What we've heard from them at the Planning Commission so far is there are certain types of buildings that, like ADUs, that might be, have a quick approval process because they need a predefined criteria. We haven't heard that yet, so I don't have a fully formed opinion of it, but I like the idea of the Planning Department thinking about how can we optimize and make this more efficient of a process while still being transparent and bringing items for public hearing. So, that's important. We also need to think about where are we targeting for projects, where are we open to ideas for projects? And this one that we got through in August was really interesting because it was formerly a commercial site. And when the project began, it was, I think, 16, maybe 16 homes, and it ended up with 102. And so, we were able to take a site that was less controversial because of its location in a commercial district and through the feedback process, say that what our community really needs is smaller homes that people can live in and live close to work. So, that was an interesting approach. Pardon me, coughing with the ash. Let's see. We definitely also need to work on the affordable housing side, and that's much harder to solve because of the funding issue. And part of the funding, as it's structured now, part of that funding is coming from other developments that aren't happening. So, I don't, I don't think that structure is really producing the outcome we want. So, we need to look at other ways to structure funding for affordable housing. And that might mean partnering with charitable organizations or nonprofit organizations. It might mean thinking about land, you know? I think about the parking garage over off of California, and, you know, that was public land, and I know we need parking here, and we also need housing. Why wasn't there a housing component to that? So, I think just getting more creative and being open to suggesting ways to remove barriers would be a really earnest, good start that I think our community could get behind.
What about the idea--
Go ahead.
What about the idea of the city purchasing the Fries site and turning that into housing?
I think it's a very creative idea. My understanding is that the owner is not yet interested. So, that's a challenge that we'd have to think about because they have a long-term, of course, there's multiple owners, but also I'm thinking specifically of the Fries building. You know, that's a rental property that brings a lot of income for them. So, we'd have to find ways to work with them to make something like that happen. But we definitely should be talking about housing in that area.
What if they were willing to sell? Do you think the city should be doing that kind of purchase?
I'm not sure if it would be the city or one of our nonprofit housing partners. Just thinking about, like, maintaining ownership of housing is a whole different business that we're not really in right now. But whoever it would be, it would be nice to have housing there.
Over the last couple of years, the city has become a little more creative with the zoning to encourage housing. The project you mentioned on San Antonio, that was the overlay zone kind of being moved south. There's also the planned community zone, which has been rebranded and is about to come back. I'm curious what your thoughts are about specific zoning changes that you would support, whether it be changing the height limit, increasing density. What kind of zoning moves do you think the city should make to encourage more housing?
I appreciate the question. Let me think about how to answer that. It's, one of the challenges we have in Palo Alto is sometimes our framings aren't productive. I recognize, we're talking a lot about that today, but what I mean is that sometimes certain ways that we phrase things are triggering, for lack of a better word. So, what I would say, instead of, you know, density proposals, for example, right now we've got a situation where if you have a grandfathered duplex or triplex and you want to renovate it, you have to make it an R1, single-family residence now. And that's unfortunate, if it's an R1 zoning. And that's unfortunate. We're losing a lot of homes that way, and several of my friends have been affected by that. So, I know it's happening even more. So, that's something I would say, for example, we should really reconsider. Why are we willing to force someone who owns a multi-family home to put it back to a single-family home? I'm not sure if that's the right thing to do. I feel pretty uncomfortable about it, honestly. Then you take that to the next step. What if you have an older couple, their kids have left Palo Alto, they can't afford to come back? They want to stay in the home they raised their kids in, but it's too much for them. Should they be allowed to, you know, have an ADU or convert their home? That's a discussion we have to have as a community. I've heard a lot of, you know, feelings either way about it, but it's something we should talk about. And I think right now, we're not even, we're not really even touching it. And then I think about the way the discussion that we should be having is being forestalled by some of the propaganda from Washington. It's very distressing, right? We don't need that kind of interference. We have a housing crisis. We have to be able to talk about this without it getting politicized. So, that's where I'm coming from. I want to have these discussions. I want to have them openly and transparently and find ways to do it that work. You know, I might have an idea that I'm bringing to the table. Different activist groups have ideas as well, but we all want to solve this problem. We all want to be able to end homelessness in Palo Alto and have housing stability in Palo Alto, have our grandkids or even our own children be able to come back and live in the city where they grew up, right? There's a lot of heart here in this discussion, and we need to embrace that instead of kind of shutting down the conversation. that instead of kind of shutting down the conversation.
These are not new issues, though. And I appreciate your general philosophy about them. But I think we're looking for more specific proposals on your part as to where in the current zoning ordinance, we ought to be looking for making changes. SB 1120 is an example. Did you support SB 1120?
I'm trying to remember. That one just passed this year, right?
It failed. It's a Tony Atkins bill to allow duplexes.
I'm not remembering the right one. Sorry.
You may be talking about SB 50, which failed last year.
Yeah. SB 50, I remember, was very divisive in our community. But I don't remember 1120. Would you like to remind me, so I can answer?
Well, very briefly, it just allowed any single-family home in an R1 zone could be, that property could be redeveloped into at least a duplex, and in some cases, a fourplex.
Well, clearly, I wasn't involved in the campaign for that bill, but I, in general, don't oppose people being able to build and develop their property. I think the bottom line is it needs to meet all the other requirements of fitting in with the neighboring properties. So, for example, if my neighbor were able to convert their home into a duplex and I couldn't tell from the outside, I'd probably be okay with that. I think that's a case-by-case basis. Turning it into, you know, something more like a high-rise apartment building, I think that people would object to that. But that wouldn't meet our current requirements anyway. So we have a really detailed set of requirements for what kind of development is allowed in our neighborhoods and how it should conform to neighboring properties. So, you know, given that light, I'm willing to be a little bit more flexible about those kind of zoning changes, but not without talking to the community. It really has to be a community discussion. And I think what's maybe kind of caught us in this circular discussion is I don't have a housing agenda. I have a community agenda. So I'm trying to say, all of this stuff needs to be discussions that we're having in a productive and positive way. And right now, I don't see those discussions happening. I see a lot of polarization and factioning. So what I hope we can do over the next couple of years is change how we're engaging and find a way to actually hear different sides and find a solution that works for people.
Isn't that what the comprehensive plan process was all about?
And are we implementing it?
Right. So what is your plan for change?
I think we need to do more listening. Right now, we're doing a lot of fighting, and I think we can do more listening. And that might mean have, you know, for example, with the Railroad, ex- cap, it's not a commission, the Railroad Group, we are having weeks and weeks and weeks of public forum exposure, hearing, collecting data, collecting feedback. We should be doing that more on other areas of our government. We do have hearings at the PTC, but not on broad discussions like this. It's on specific agendized items. So I think we can do more of that.
Yeah. We are in the middle of the pandemic and hopefully to come out of that next year. Do you think that the city is doing enough right now to aid renters, business owners? Is there more that could be done? And how do you foresee yourself, should you get elected to council, kind of helping the community to come out of this?
I really appreciate that question. We are, we're really struggling. Our businesses are struggling. And our renters and our small landlords are struggling, right? This is a real bad situation. So the kinds of things I have in mind to help us get through is, involves more testing, rapid turnaround time for testing results, and really getting a grip on the spread of the pandemic in our community. That may also mean for people who have caregivers outside the home come in and help them, that we make sure that they have the PPE, a personal protective equipment that they need. I don't know how often we're checking on these things, or if it's really just demand-driven, like somebody calls up and says, I need help, versus us proactively making sure that they have the supplies they need. We also should think about ways to get creative with the small businesses that, you know, rent is a problem for them, too. It's not just the residents. So we're seeing a lot of our small businesses having to close down because the rent is on top of everything else, trying to pay your employees and pay the rent. And supplies and marketing is just too much. So I keep thinking about, are there ways that we can get outside and help with the marketing or bring some of these businesses to the neighborhoods through special events, like the California and University Avenue farmers markets, but in other parts of town? I think that might help. But whatever it is, it involves reaching out to those communities and listening to them. And I know the city has been doing that, you know, making it easier to get permits for those kinds of things might be a way to aid them. And then for residents, you know, we have some eviction protections in place for COVID-related evictions. But what I'm hearing from the community is, you know, the debt is building up, right? And, you know, now it's six months of, you know, potentially being unemployed, not being evicted, but having that debt hanging over us. So something, in addition to the eviction protections, that I would like to see is for us to work with our state leaders and our national leaders to see if we can find some kind of debt forgiveness program for the renters that doesn't leave the, you know, small mom and pop person renting out to them from another state or something bankrupt either, right? Can we find a way to carry this load for the duration so that people aren't destitute, bankrupt, or homeless, right? Really, we need to protect the community's safety and figure out the financial drivers that we can, levers we can pull in order to keep that safety and stability in housing.
Carrie, I'm sorry to say we're out of time. Thank you for coming in. And best of luck in your campaign.
Thank you very much.